Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is August 20th, 2019. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Harold Allen.
Mayor, Council, if I could, I'm gonna try to change this up a little bit tonight. I was, I mentioned Kathy coming in. I was sitting waiting for a meeting today and was beginning to put this together. And just started to go through the news of the weekend in areas within 60 miles of us. Obviously, we haven't met in a month. Obviously, since then, we had the awful situations in El Paso and in Dayton. And, of course, that's national news. But just sitting down today on this instrument and seeing what happened over the weekend. Situation in Apex, 18-year-old kid in Raleigh getting ready to go away to college to play sports was killed. There were situations in Winston-Salem with two people, High Point. And then the one that really got me was Durham. That's a young man, nine years old, his name is Zion. Can you imagine a nine-year-old, young African-American kid named Zion in Durham last year? Who played basketball there. He and his two brothers, his brother and sister, and his aunt were supposedly going to get a slushy. Had a car pull up beside him, 15 rounds of weapons. And one of the seven-year-old boy got his skin, just like this. The nine-year-old kid took it in his head and got killed. In Durham, that's 25 people this year. So I went on the council meeting last night, or the minutes, or the video on their website at the council. And that council was to the point of saying, this is a, it's simply a state of emergency in Durham. And we look at a town like Durham, which has made tremendous strides, nationally recognized now. And my point is, and they deserve that, they've done wonderful things. But then you've got part of it this way, and then you've got this situation that exists, and it can happen anywhere. We've had our problems here. Actually, I think there was a significant problem in Hall River this weekend. I believe it was someone threatening a police officer. And Chief, y'all have done, I think, a really miraculous job. And I'm not saying this because I'm a homer, but, you know, I think you said we've had four murders, and three of them was in one situation, unfortunately. And then the situation, the domestic situation here a few weeks ago. But tonight, instead of doing a prayer, what I like to do is just have a moment of silence and let everybody in here sort of reflect in their own way. You know, what, you know, who you need to speak to in terms of your faith or whatever. Because this situation is, I'm 66 years old, and I have never seen anything like this. I can recall going to school, how old I am, and kids would have shotguns in the back of their pickup. And I was talking to Jay Smith last night, because they'd gone deer hunting, and nobody thought anything about it. Nothing. And here we are now, where, and I go back to Durham, and it occurs, Durham is a fantastic city. I mean, if you just go on 85th in the middle of Durham, you're looking at just enormous growth and development. You know, one of the greatest medical centers in the country is there. Wonderful entrepreneur-type programs in Durham. And I would advise you, go on, if you get a chance, go on their website and listen to the council last night as they're facing this issue. 25 people in less than eight months have killed in Durham. So if we could, just have a moment of silence and let everyone sort of reflect on this
Thank you. Before we continue too much of our meeting, I want to recognize one new face that we have to our council today. We have a new reporter from the Times News. Elizabeth Patman has joined us. Elizabeth will be covering the city council from now on. And she's an Elon alum, so not a new face to the community. We're excited to have her back in Burlington. So if we could all welcome Elizabeth. We have a remembrance this evening, and I'm gonna turn things over to Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to share this evening a moment of remembrance for city employee Amy Ireland. Amy passed away Tuesday, July 30th, at ARMC. Amy was a native of Caswell County, born in 1964. She preceded in death by her parents, James Willis and Barbara Morrow. She's a faithful member of Stony Creek AME Church. And left to cherish her memories are her loving husband Jerry, who's with us this evening, her son Jeremy, who's joined us this evening, and his son Jerry Ireland Jr. and daughter Tiffany Ireland, and his sister Lisa Morrow. Also joining us this evening are a couple of Amy's coworkers that wanted to be here tonight as well. Jane Smith is our Recreation Supervisor over our Centers and Programs, and Beverly Schaffner, who's our Recreation Supervisor at the Fairchild Community Center. Amy worked for the city for nine years in recreation parks, at the Fairchild Community Center, was a summertime playground counselor at the community center, and helped with lots of special events throughout her years with the city, and played a big, big role in the community. And we will, we miss her dearly and wanted to take a moment this evening to share that with the community.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
Sorry for your loss. It's very young.
Next on our agenda, we have a report from our Burlington Downtown Corporation. And this time, we'll again recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to welcome Jessica Passion, who's the Executive Director of the Burlington Downtown Corporation. She's gonna bring a report this evening from the Burlington Downtown Corporation. As council knows, the city currently has a contract with what we call the BDC for services in the Municipal Service District. That's in accordance with state statutes. And the statutes require that agencies that receive funds through a municipal service district provide an annual report. So Jessica's gonna do that this evening. She's gonna talk about the, what the statute requires, to talk about the needs of the service district, completed projects, pending projects, and give a report of how the agencies saw the input of property owners and residents in the district. Council will remember, and just to remind everyone, that March 4th work session and the March 8th goal review workshop, the BDC presented their seven and seven goals for downtown. That's been placed in the, during the workshop, that was in the staff recommended initiated projects tier. It's now included in our current project matrix following the work session. The essence of those items is included under the heading Downtown Plaza and Main Street Reconnection, and I've got that information if anybody needs us to refer to that this evening. Timeline shows our initial steps, second quarter of 2019 for BDC to align project partners on vision, goals, and action steps with the council. It obviously continues out through 2025 and beyond. It has a large, a long, a long horizon, and Jessica's gonna, I'm sure, provide some more details along that this evening. We have not, as council knows, have not ironed out budgets, timelines, or any real particulars on this. It's been conceptual through this year, and then I'm sure Jessica's gonna address some of that this evening. So I'm gonna yield the floor to Jessica Passion this evening, and I think she has board members with her, and I'm gonna do those introductions.
I sure do. Well, thank you, because you've given my presentation. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Passion, the Executive Director of the Burlington Downtown Corporation. And I'm delighted again to be speaking with you this evening. This is my third annual report to you all, and my second year, actually, doing the work. So anyway, I do want to thank city council for allowing me to be here, and then also to thank my board and Board President Coleman Rich, who recently joined. This has been your first month with us. And so I am so thankful to have the support of our board, and many of you, the mayor, of course, Peter, and several other folks, Nolan, Lisa Wolf, who's not here. Many, many city staff are on our board and serve as committee chairs or committee members, and so we really appreciate that partnership. And now I'm off my notes, sorry. And I'm working two different devices tonight, so let's see how that goes. Interesting. Okay. All right. Here we go. Okay, the Burlington Downtown Corporation, as you know, is a 501(c)(3) agency that works to bring together the resources of the city, community partners, and the downtown community to maintain, enhance, and promote downtown. Our work is guided by the Main Street America program. So basically, downtown revitalization is always done through the lens of historic preservation. I'm so sorry. As many of you may recall from last year, the BDC adopted a new vision and mission statement. At its 2017 retreat, we were led by the advisement of Liz Param, the Director of our Main Street and Rural Planning Center. And our mission is written in present tense, however, it speaks to the downtown that we wish to see in five years. And so this is why it reads this way. "Our mission states simply that the Burlington Downtown Corporation creates an environment for downtown development by engaging community stakeholders and partners, and inspires investment, business development, and job growth. All in an effort to fulfill the new BDC economic positioning and vision statements for 2023," which states...
Yeah, Patricia, Steve, we heard outrage.
We're all having tech problems tonight. This is cool. Thank you. Solidarity. Okay. So our vision statement says that we would like to be a nationally recognized, we are a nationally recognized maker city, downtown Burlington. It's the Piedmont Central Gathering Place for spontaneous interaction and collaborative connections between artisans, innovators, and entrepreneurs. It features a creative arts and entertainment district, an innovation village, and the county's largest collection of downtown living options. We were armed with this mission and vision for 2023 and had a sharp focus during the 1819 fiscal year. The drive and excitement from 1819 has allowed us to begin the 1920 year, moving full throttle ahead, ready to tackle the work required to attain our vision and mission for downtown." Look, I'm doing it. I'm doing it. Two devices. So the BDC was established in 1988 with the formation of the Municipal Service District, and Burlington's entry into the National Main Street program that I mentioned before. So we celebrated our 30th birthday last year. We did it with not quite as much fanfare as the city did for its 125th. But I did want to recognize the great work that we've done this past fiscal... Oh, what's it doing? It's gone wild. I keep hitting my arrow button, and it's taking me to a strange place. I'm so sorry. There we go. So I would be remiss if I did not highlight the important work that we've done over the past 30 years. On the left side of the slide here, you can see that in 30 years, we have cumulative data for important key functions that the BDC has done in our downtown. You can see that since we were funded, founded in 1988, we've established 75 net new businesses. That, that comes from the opening of 212 businesses and closing of 137 over the 38-year span of our organization's history. Additionally, we have conducted 84 rehabilitation projects, 132 facade grant projects, and 10 public installation projects have been completed in the last 30 years since the BDC has been here. Our funding numbers are really, really a point of pride. Our public investment is at $9.9 million. Private investment, $57.7 million. And when compared to other Main Street communities, that's quite a large number. So our total investment over the last 30 years has been $66.6 million. And I rounded down. Peggy would be proud of me. So it's really a little bit higher than that. The one thing that we don't highlight, and I think that we really should, is the impact of our volunteers. So we are a nonprofit, and we have directors on the board, as well as all of our committee members who are volunteers. So we estimate and report these numbers very conservatively. So over the last 30 years, we've had 5,428 volunteer hours, which yields, the value of those hours is $85,461. You can see on the other side of the screen, we've broken it down for this particular fiscal year, but I really wanted to highlight what we've done the last 30 years. So since the creation of the MSD, the properties in the downtown core pay the MSD tax. And for the first time in many years, 2017 saw an increase of that tax rate from 16 cents to 17 cents per $100 valuation. And as you can see above, it provides nearly half, it's really small, right there, sorry, guys, it provides nearly half of our budget, our revenue valuation for the 2018-19 year, it provided half. As you're aware, the BDC also receives additional support from the city for operations, and 2% of our budget is comprised of annual private giving. Investing in downtown is a really important key priority to fulfill our mission. And on behalf of the BDC board and staff, we do want to thank the city for your continued support of our small grants program. Also depicted very small right here in the bottom right corner. As you know, you guys, the city has promised a $75,000 annual commitment for funds to invest in the health of our downtown. And I'm happy to report that we've awarded over half, in fact, we awarded over half, nearly 65% of our grant dollars last year, last fiscal year. Four different grants were awarded to as many different recipients, which was a change from the 2017-18 grant cycle, which saw three different grants that we gave out to three different recipients. During the 1819 grant cycle, the board focused on awarding larger grants to building rehabilitation and modernization projects. These larger grant awards yielded greater dollar-for-dollar economic impact. And this year, I was really proud to report that we leveraged $1.6 million in private investment with our $75,000 grant program. It's the BDC's goal to invest all of those grant dollars back into the district, and so we've developed a new granting cycle schedule to help encourage the use of those grant dollars moving forward. Taking a closer look at the state of the MSD properties, I'm pleased to note that over 80% of the 96 buildings are currently occupied. The buildings that are vacant, there are only three, but they are unavailable, of the buildings that are vacant, excuse me. Nearly half of the vacant spaces are in development stages, and several have projects in the pipeline. The remaining vacant properties are move-in-ready, and all of those owners are actively seeking tenants. This positions the MSD nicely because we have spaces to grow and expand, which provides opportunities to enhance the business mix in downtown. The current business mix, as you can see, is comprised of 43% service-focused firms, and specifically, we have a majority, excuse me, of service-focused firms. Specifically, 43% of the businesses in the MSD are service-focused. Of the 97 businesses in the district, 13 are food establishments, which is one of the areas where we hope to increase our offerings in downtown. And the MSD is home to actually 81 residential units. However, recruitment efforts are focused on diversifying the offerings in retail and service market segments, as well as increasing the number of residential spaces in the downtown core. With the completion of the Mahostry Lofts, we will see another 67 units, technically outside of the MSD district, but close enough, we've embraced them as our neighbors. And so we will be seeing at least 120 new residents because of that project. So we didn't see, we saw a change in personnel, but also the landscape has changed as well. As I mentioned before, seven businesses closed and three opened, which yielded a net positive business, new businesses in downtown of four. And we're lucky to have the spaces for us to grow, as I mentioned earlier. I'm gonna talk about several new revamped initiatives that helped the BDC achieve its mission. The Promotion Committee helped reimagine the former MQ, or Monthly Merchant Mingle Event. It's now called the First Tuesday. So the First Tuesday Downtown Coffee Talk focuses on including all downtown employees, neighbors, and residents. So in fact, anyone who's walking around is welcome to stop and see us. And we're focused on community gathering and informal gathering each month, so there really is no topic or agenda. It's truly to continue to see connections made and important relationships are generated and strengthened in the MSD. The BDC's new Downtown Dollar program has also provided wonderful initiatives and promotional events and giveaways, and it keeps money here in the district. So the Downtown Dollars program, or Burlington Bucks, as I think we're gonna start to call it, provides gift certificates of the amount of $5 or $10 increments, and are accepted at over a dozen merchant locations. And those locations are being, the list is being increased daily, in fact. A fourth, a third project, excuse me, is the Downtown mural project, which launched this spring after we received a $10,000 Community Innovation Fund grant, which was awarded to the BDC by the Alamance Community Foundation. The grant funds will serve as seed money for a total of three murals in downtown. And the BDC Mural and Art Selection Committee selected a Chicago visual artist named Marucio Ramirez, I'd never say it right, as the artist for the first mural of, and we received 33 grant applications, RFP submissions, excuse me, and two of those were international. And so we are very pleased to have Mr. Ramirez. He's created murals across the country for businesses such as Microsoft, Vitamin Works, Vitamin Water, excuse me, Red Bull, Stella Arstros, I'm not a beer drinker. Say that. Lovely. Artois. And, sure, and the city of, excuse me, the city of Milwaukee as well. And he's depicted there. So you'll, the site location has changed, which has not yet been publicly announced, but it will actually now be on the back of Bella's House and facing Webb Avenue. Another thing that I'd like to highlight is our downtown champion. So in 2013, Elon University Downtown Innovation Group is a collaboration of university staff, faculty, members, and BDC staff, who coordinate student projects based on downtown area expertise, and we partner the students with businesses that need help. The DIG, we call the group DIG. The DIG members have led their students in many service learning projects. Coleman probably speak to the number... Dozens, dozens.
No, yeah, I'll say at least 20 to 30 projects that our faculty have done out of the marketing department from market research.
Yep. And, we talk about Tim Norville in particular, all of his work that he's done. And so these projects have benefited the downtown area in many ways, as Coleman mentioned, assisting with marketing campaigns, strategic planning, and more. The partnership was named this year as the key, as a key action item in Elon Civic, excuse me, the DIG group was, the partnership with the DIG group was named this year as a key action item in Elon Civic and Action Plan for 2025, which demonstrates the strides towards a permanent reciprocal relationship between the university and downtown Burlington. So we're proud to name DIG as this year's 2018 Main Street Champion. Yeah, seven and seven. So this year, we did, this year saw the completion of a revamped 20-year vision and action plan, as Harden mentioned earlier. Many hours of hard work went into updating the plan and adopting it to the current state of downtown, with the new and more, with new and more detailed goals, as you all saw many times last March. Perhaps most interesting part of the plan is the seven and seven, which is the framework that we will be using to guide our work and our plan of work over the next seven years. Catchy, like that seven and seven. The Board of Directors and the four-pillar communities crafted the seven-year plan of work, crafted the seven-year plan of work to lay out action steps for each of the projects. And work has already, excuse me, work has already begun making them a reality. So the board spent a day and a half working diligently to establish this 2019-2036 plan of work. You all probably received that in your packet. Why'd I have to do a document? So following the guidance of the Vision and Action Plan seven and seven, that's what we used to outline the framework of our seven-year plan of work. The Board of Directors followed the strategic plan path laid out in the 2019-2036 Vision and Action Plan, specifically the seven and seven. And those economic development strategies are what we used to guide the organization's work, and it's outlined in the vision, I'm sorry, in the plan of work by action items. We will be reporting back to you next, we're moving to an August schedule, next August, on the progress we've made towards those ambitious but achievable goals. And they'll strengthen the love that people have for our downtown. I try to keep it short and brief. The actual plan of work has many more highlights and other things, but thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. So Harden, I didn't go quite into as much detail, but I certainly can.
Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council?
I'm told to keep it short.
Jessica, I do have a question.
Sure.
I read the plan of work, and I'm not, there wasn't anything to let me know what the significance of the highlighting.
Highlighting, thank you for that. Those are the initiatives that we're gonna tackle this year. So we wanted to be sure that we kept in our, in our line of vision, the entire scope of the seven-year plan of work. So we didn't want to leave sight of the things that needed to be done, you know, five or six years out, because we realized some of these initiatives have, that's a really heavy lift. So what we've done is listed everything we need to do to accomplish the seven and seven, and then we've highlighted what we want to get done this year. And then next year, hopefully, those will be crossed off the list, and you'll see more highlights. Thank you. Yeah.
Other questions from council?
Just like you for your support, city and council.
Excellent.
Thank you for your patience with my using two devices.
This time, we recognize our in-arm city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's our responsibility to have a reasonable duty to avoid conflict and interest. I ask that there be potential conflict in the city's general.
Before council, our minutes from the July 15, 2019 city council work session and the July 16, 2019 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda has been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria vehicle as surplus property to Alamance Community College to be used in the basic law enforcement training, otherwise known as BLET program pursuant to NCGS 160A-274. Item B to approve budget amendment 2020-3 to allow animal services to use donations received to purchase equipment and supplies for the Burlington Animal Shelter. Item C to approve budget amendment 2020-4 for projects carried forward from fiscal year 2018-19. Do I hear a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items is ready.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda items have been approved. We have two items of unfinished business from our last meeting. Item one, a public hearing has been continued for city council to consider an application to rezone from R15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of an automobile parking lot. The property is located on the northwest side of Overman Drive, references Alamance County Tax Identification Number 113434, and being a portion of 113435. This was continued from our July 16, 2019 city council meeting. The public hearing is still open. And at this time, we'll recognize interim Director of Planning and Community Development, Mike Nunn.
Evening, Mayor and council. I thought I would just take a second, if you don't mind, to remind everybody, refresh what this request was, if that's appropriate. Just orient to the Huffer Mill Road Interstate. This is the existing Flow Volkswagen facility. It's to the rear, this is Overman, in the rear of the property. The request is to zone from R15 Residential to Conditional Business District for the use of an automobile parking lot. This is again at the existing site of Flow along Huffer Mill Road, but this is on the Overman Drive portion to the rear. This is only for automobile parking lot. Property is contiguous with existing commercial zoning, and the proposed parking lot will be properly screened for residential properties and has no access to Overman Drive. The request is compatible with the existing zoning in the area. It also meets the requirements identified in the Greenways and Bike Ways Plan by providing an easement for the future greenway along Overman Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this request at their June 24 meeting and recommends approval by the city council. And I can answer any questions if you...
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any comments that you wanted to add to that?
No. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them hopefully.
All right. Any other questions from council? Otherwise, we'll ask if we have any public comment. All right. If there are any public questions, you can address them afterwards.
Okay.
Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this rezoning? Anyone on this side of the room? Yes? If you wouldn't mind stepping to the microphone. And if you could state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Margaret Luzerco.
My name is Margaret Mazurko, live at 417 Overman Drive. I live all the way on the under the block, and I have some real concerns with the amount of traffic that we already have, but what will happen with this parking lot going into the neighborhood several years ago.
So, Huffmil would be on the north side of this screen, and I know, I know a lot of your neighbors concerned, because several of them came to the dinners that we, you know, invited you guys to come. I wanted, you know, I wanted to talk to you about it beforehand. A lot of people have concerns about the car wash, and unfortunately, I can't do anything about the car wash. But what I can do is improve our facility, and we do only have one exit to this proposed employee lot, and it's onto our lot. So, we cannot come onto Overman from where we're putting the new lot. In addition to that, by getting this zoning and creating this lot, it's going to create a lot of space on the existing lot where the tractor-trailers can actually pull on the lot now, unload, and then pull out, rather than sitting in front of some of your neighbors' homes for a half an hour, 45 minutes at a time. I really think we're improving it. I think the end result will be, will be wonderful. It's just going to be a little bit of pain as we go through the construction process. But, you know, I understand your pain with Village Grill, because I eat there three times a week, and I walk over there, because I can't, there's nowhere to park. The car wash, unfortunately, I get it. I hear it from the dealership. I know your neighbors are concerned about it, because they've come and talked to us about it. You know, we're not going to be putting in any type of car wash like that. There's not going to be any additional noise coming from our facility. We have no plans to ever do that. But I do think that this will, you know, it's going to stop a lot of the traffic coming up and down the road, because I told my staff, once these improvements are completed, they are no longer allowed to leave the backside of the property. So, just want to ease your mind a little bit. I do promise you, that's going to change from now on.
How about the test drives?
Yeah, the test drives will be leaving the front of the dealership. They are no longer allowed to leave the back of the dealership. We get concerns about closing the back of the dealership, just because of public utilities, getting trucks in, getting trucks out. So, we have to leave the gate back there open, but we, you know, as far as my staff goes, our customers, everybody will be leaving the front of the dealership moving forward. Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you.
Any further questions from council?
Council's been provided with a blue set of motion recommendations. This is both approval and denial. Do I hear a motion from council?
Well, I'll move that we recommend approval of this request with the stated conditions, which made a big difference to me, to rezone from R15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District. The property is located on the northwest side of Overman Drive, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 113434, and being a portion of 113435. My motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use plan map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have regional, commercial, and suburban residential uses. The property is contiguous with commercial zoning, and the proposed parking lot is properly screened from residential properties. The development incorporates requirements identified in both the Greenways and Bike Ways Plan Map 3.4A Comprehensive Network Northwest Burlington, and the Pedestrian Master Plan Map 3.2 Pedestrian Network Recommendation Map Northwest Grid. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the comprehensive plan calls for regional, commercial, and suburban residential uses in the area, and the use of an automobile parking lot is compatible with the uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning in the area. The developer is providing an easement for the future greenways network.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's passed. Thank you very much for being here. Next on our agenda, we have another public hearing that is still open. A public hearing has been continued from the City Council to consider an application to rezone from CI Conditional Industrial District to I2 Light Industrial District. The property is located at 305 North Main Street, referenced as, and being a portion of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136545. This was continued again from our July 16, 2019 City Council Meeting. The public hearing is still open. At this time, we again recognize Planning and Community Development Director, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is an item, as was stated, was carried over. To refresh your location memory, this is the downtown location. Currently here is Main Street. Roughland Street is the side street, and for reference, this is the Train Depot, Amtrak Train Depot. The request is to zon a portion of the parcel from Conditional Industrial to Light Industrial District. This is at 305 North Main Street. The property is, was rezoned to be to General Business and Residential R9 in January of 1995. As you recall, we talked about last time, that was for a tent washing facility at that location. That has not existed for over five years at this location. The comprehensive plan calls for mixed-use and traditional residential in the area. The light industrial zoning will restore the entire parcel to I2, allowing the property to be used for a mixture of commercial and industrial purposes. Again, this is just a portion of the property, and I can show that to you, so we're clear about that. That's an important part. It's the part in red that you see there. The rest is already zoned.
Any questions from council before we resume the public hearing?
Mr. Huffmil's here to speak. If you have any questions, please.
Excellent. You will have time afterwards if there are any questions. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this rezoning? Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Any questions from council, or do I hear a motion? Council's been provided with suggested motions to approve or deny on their green sheets.
I'll make a motion that we approve this request. The City Council believes the request is consistent with the comp plan and moves to recommend approval. Suggested motion, I may be recommend approval of this request to rezone the CI Conditional Industrial District to I2 Light Industrial District. The property is located at 305 North Main Street, referenced as being a portion of Alamance Tax Identification Number 136545. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have mixed-use and traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the surrounding zoning of I2 Light Industrial District. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the comprehensive plan calls for mixed-use and traditional residential uses in the area. The property was previously zoned I2 Light Industrial District. The request is compatible with the existing zoning in the area.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's been approved. Thank you very much. We have one item of new business this evening. Item three on your agenda, City Council will consider temporarily closing the following streets on September 7, 2019, from 7:00 a.m. until 9:30 a.m. during a 5K special event hosted by Walker Dance Ballet Theater. Contingent upon meeting requirements of the special events application permit process, the details of those street closings are spelled out in your agenda. This time, we'd like to call forward Ann Brady Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. We want to close the streets from 7 to 9:30 a.m. on September 7. We're hosting a 5K to raise monies for our new sets, for our 38-year-old production of The Nutcracker in Alamance County. So, we want to close a small portion of East Front Street and a small portion of South Main Street, and hoping to be done maybe before 9:30 a.m., before all the businesses open downtown.
Okay. Any questions from council? Anyone planning to sign up for the 5K?
Oh, come on.
What are you calling it? It's, this is nuts.
Yes, this run is nuts.
I would feel that way.
Do I hear a motion to approve this item?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary street closing request contingent upon it meeting all city requirements of the special events application process.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's passed. Thank you, Ann. That concludes our regular agenda. We have no public comments signed up this evening. Do I hear any council comments?
I want to know what the situation is with the, the car wash. What, what's happening there that is impeding traffic coming? Because I thought that just comes in and out.
It does. It's just, it's a high-volume car wash. It also includes a high-volume air blower, dryer, situation, but it's highly used. It's, it's there along a corridor that has a lot of traffic on it already.
Yeah, I think just because of the way that street is. It's narrow, and you have a lot of people parking on the side. I use that car wash, and I'm, so I'm, I mean, I know it. And getting out on Huffmil Road is, it needs to be right in, right out. You take your life, your own hands taking a breath out there. But it's just that narrow street.
Yeah.
That's it in a nutshell. There's no congestion from a standpoint of the car wash itself. It's just ingress egress on that street.
Any other council comments, questions?
Let's be honest, we got a very successful business adjacent to that, to car wash, too, which creates substantial traffic at lunch and dinner hours.
Challenges of successful business.
That's exactly right.
It's a good problem to have.
That's right. Good problem.
Couple of quick announcements. One, we had National Night Out earlier this month, and I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the residents who helped organize our over 40 block parties across the city, as well as to our police officers, firefighters, city staff, council members, everybody who got out and helped share information of the city, and all the great things that are happening, as well as help our neighborhoods organize. We know that's a wonderful event for promoting public safety, community watches. We've seen some incredible work in Morrotown, thanks to the community engagement that comes out of programs like National Night Out. So, we're excited to have such a vibrant program in our community, and we look forward to it again beginning of August next year. Want to mention a couple upcoming events. Carousel Festival is coming up, September 21 through 22, and we're excited to announce our headlining act is Love and Theft, which will be playing Saturday evening. If you're a country music fan, it'll be a good program to look forward to. Fourth Friday is happening this week, Friday, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. Gypsy Danger's playing the main stage there. And then, our Clear the Shelter event, which happened on August 18, which is a national event. We adopted 48 animals out of the shelter in a single day. And we're continuing our Dog Days of Summer program. If you're still looking for that dog or cat in your life, for only $15, you can adopt a new special friend. And then, you may have heard that there's a census happening in 2020. Communities all across the county, and Alamance County are working hard to make sure that we get a complete count in April of next year. And you can help out by becoming a census taker. You can apply online for that job. It is paid at 2020census.gov/jobs. It's a wonderful way to help out your community and make sure that we're able to apply for the full federal funding that we get through the census data every year. And that applies for the next 10 years after the census. And if you've seen any posts or construction, our greenway is underway over by Elon University and the Loy Solar Farm. We've had a lot of excitement, a lot of people going to check out that new greenway, and we're looking forward to its continued construction. And a huge thank you to all of our funding partners there, Impact Alamance, LabCorp, the Town of Elon, Elon University, all of them are making this connection possible. That is the first phase of our cross-city greenway, going all the way from Elon University to the Hall River. Any other council comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next month.